Romulus City Council Regular Meeting for July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, being held right here at our City Hall. So, welcome back, everyone. Madam Chair, roll call was taken during our special meeting at six forty-five, and we do have a quorum for our regular meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Tonight's regular council meeting is as follows. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Number three, petitioner. Number four, chairperson's report. Number five is the mayor's report. Number six is the clerk's report. Seven, treasurer's report. Eight, public comment. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eleven is warrant twenty dash thirteen. And number twelve, communication. And number thirteen, adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
This meeting is also being held via the Zoom meeting app. Those wishing to join the City Council meeting electronically may do so by dialing in six four six five five eight eight six five six. The meeting ID number is eight eight three five four four zero three three two eight. Those wishing to speak during the public comment portion of this meeting may do so. During that time, you will be muted until that portion of the agenda. Next, we will need an approval for the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on July sixth, two thousand and twenty.
Madam Chairman, I will move for the approval of the regular meeting held on July.
Motion by Mr. Wildsworth, supported by Ms. Webb, to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, July sixth. Mr. Wildsworth? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion.
Number three, we have a petitioner this evening. We have Brent Miles, and I'm going to ask if he will come up. And also, as he comes up, just want to remind everyone, after Mr. Miles has spoken, that you have four items, as it was discussed during the study session, that council that you'll be asked to take action on. Mr. Miles?
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. Again, we have proposed, as was stated, we have four items on your agenda tonight. This is approximately a fifty-six million dollar redevelopment on E-course Road. We're happy to go back through the presentation if you like, but this will at least create, we think, at least four hundred jobs. Obviously, it's a vacant site. It's been vacant for over ten years. Environmentally contaminated site, formerly owned by GM through a series of other owners, ultimately to us to actually put it back in use and, as I would say, start the next chapter of this property's life. And we're excited about the opportunity. So, as it relates to traffic, I'll maybe address that. You know, we'll be, you know, we'll work with the county. We'll reach out about the traffic study if there's something planned, or maybe they could speed up anything. We'll try to be a good partner there and not just do what the county had asked, but we'll try to see if there's other ways that we can leverage, you know, improvements there, because we want a good entrance, too. You know, we've driven it. We know that, obviously, it needs some repair and replacement in some areas as well. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. I don't want to make it longer than needed here tonight, but would really appreciate, you know, this being our first formal approval with you all, to be a good one. We plan to invest hundreds of million dollars in this community, and I think this is the right start on a property that's not producing many taxes now, no jobs, and is environmentally contaminated. So, thank you for your consideration.
Cox, here's it. Want him to clarify each of those actions.
Yeah. Would you mind?
Yeah, the first one on your agenda is, would be a motion to approve the termination and release agreement for the conditional zoning agreement for this site. As I discussed in the study session, that agreement needs to be terminated to move forward.
To approve the termination of the conditional zoning agreement between the E-course Commons
and the city of Romulus property located at three seven, three seven five three zero E-course Road.
Support.
Who's that? Okay. I can't see with the mask on. Okay, it's been motion by Mr. Wildsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for the land use, termination of and release of the conditional zoning agreement, and request approval of the E-course Common Redevelopment Project in Brownfield Plan, administered by Wayne County. Any discussion?
What you're voting on right now is just the termination.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wording.
Okay.
Termination and release of conditional zoning between the city and the north, is it north?
No, it's North Point, yes.
Yeah, okay, because where they differ. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Your motion's.
The second motion is regards to amendments to the zoning map. That amendment is necessary to carry out what you've just approved in the termination of the zoning agreement, so that we'll convert the property back to M-two zoning.
Yes, Mr. Williams. That motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance zoning map amendment for thirty-seven five thirty E-course Road, partial eighty dash zero two four dash ninety-nine dash zero 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 five dash seven zero three, to change the zoning from M-T to M-two.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo, for the first reading of the ordinance zoning map amendment for thirty-seven five thirty-fourth Road, parcel eighty dash zero two four dash ninety-nine dash zero zero five dash seven zero three, to change the zoning from M-T to M-two. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Motion approved.
The third motion is before you tonight, is consideration of approving the final condominium plan for the subject site.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Roscoe.
I'll make the motion to approve the final condominium plan for SPR dash two thousand and twenty twenty dash zero zero four for E-course Commons located at three seven two five zero E-course Road.
Right.
It's been motion by Ms. Wildsworth, supported by Mr. Wildsworth, for the final condominium plan for SPR dash two oh two oh dash zero zero four for E-course Commons located at thirty-seven two fifty E-course Road. Any discussion?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Williams?
My issue, I don't have a problem with your company, but as I said, the E-course Road is very important to myself and residents that live in that long stretch. And I can't see, I just wish Wayne County and your company would have came together and at least considered, even the city around us, the planning department, would have at least considered of expanding that road that it wouldn't have interfered with the already congested traffic we have. That's just my concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
No.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
The final motion is a motion to concur with Wayne County Commission's approval of this Brownfield Plan, or to deny concurrence, whichever your choice is.
We have a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for the city of Romulus to deny the concurrence in the approval of the Brownfield Plan filed by E-course Commons LLC for property located at three seven five three zero E-course Road, partial number eighty dash zero two four dash ninety-nine dash zero zero five dash seven zero three.
Support.
It's been motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mr. Wildsworth, for denied concurrence and approval of the Brownfield Plan filed for E-course Commons LLC for property located at thirty-seven five thirty E-course Road, parcel eighty eight zero dash zero two four dash nine nine dash zero zero five dash seven zero three. Ms. Abdo?
Correct.
Ms.
Motion by Ms. Roscoe.
I made the motion.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
The man, I'm sorry, I can't see.
Okay.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms.
I'm sorry.
Approve.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And first, I want to thank the city for going above and beyond CDC guidelines to make the council comfortable coming back into the council chambers. Thank you so much, Mayor, and your team, for pulling this together for us. And thank you to the city council for coming in today, our first meeting in a couple of months. Good to see everybody and good to be back. On that note, I do want to do shout-outs. We could do prayers for Mr. Barton. He is traveling. His son is very ill, so we want to definitely have prayers for him and his family. Him safe travels as he travels to see his son. And on that note, I want to turn the floor over to Councilwoman Roscoe.
Thank you very much, and welcome everybody tonight. I have appreciation letter that I was asked to read from the DDA, which is the Downtown Development Authority, and it goes as this. It says, "We are very thankful and appreciative for the continued support we've seen from the people of Romulus. Each year, we have so many residents, employees, past and present, who volunteer to help clean up and beautify our community. Typically, we gather in early spring for our annual clean sweep and downtown planning days. And obviously, due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, we weren't able to do that this year. It is absolutely wonderful to see those going above and beyond with no one looking or expecting anything in return. However, we feel recognition of their generosity and support to their community is very much due. Please extend our sincere appreciation and gratitude to the following residents and employees. Beth Mays and Tony Heimberger for donation and planted flowers in the downtown planners. Jennifer Prayer donated and planted flowers in the missable campus planners. Mary Drewyer donated and planted flowers in the missable campus planners. Joan Carlton donated and planted flowers in the planners in front of the library. Deborah Hoffman donated and planted flowers in the planners in front of the Romulus Athletics Center. And Tracy Eddings donated and planted flowers around the thirty-fourth District Court sign. And there will be certificates that the Downtown Authority will send out to the people I mentioned. And I just want to thank everyone for doing their part. You see a lot of people, you know, that go above and beyond, and this is just a few, and because we've had so many people that have stepped up, done their part, helped where it's been needed throughout the city, not just the few that we know of and can recognize tonight. But again, thank you so much, and certificates will be going out to them.
Ms. Roscoe, that's awesome. Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Wildsworth?
If I could. Mayor, and to the reverence of the council, this past Friday, we had one of our employees, Carl Hunt, retired. And it's unbelievable, but he did forty-nine years and, I believe, nine months here. And I remember, I remember Carl went back in my seventies, eighties, working in town with the Sheriff's Department. He worked in the DPW. He probably is going to be the longest employee in the city, and we should pass a resolution. I'm congratulating him. I've known Carl for a long time.
I'll support that.
All right. The name again? What was his name again?
Carl Hunt.
Carl Hunt?
Hunt?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I believe he started in nineteen seventy, or seventy-one.
Okay.
That's unbelievable, you stay that long, but he did a good job.
Awesome.
We had some others also, Madam Chairman. We'll bring them all to you once. We had several retirements this year.
Okay. Okay, we're going to do this one right here, though, right? Okay, it's been motion by Mr. Wildsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for a resolution for Carl Hunt's retirement of forty-nine plus years. Any discussion? Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved. Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Just a communication from the mayor, from the city. CSX will be closing the railroad tracks on Huron River Drive directly north of Wabash Street on Sunday, July twenty-sixth, for some repair work. They plan on opening them, opening again the day, on the end of the day, Tuesday, July twenty-eighth. Traffic will be diverted to take Wabash Street to North Line Road to get across, get around the closed tracks. So, let's keep that date in mind, Sunday, July twenty-sixth, through end of day, Tuesday, July twenty-eighth. There will be some disruption for a period of time, so please manage it accordingly. Thank you, Mayor.
On that same line, we often get requests for CSX crossings, and they decide when they're going to do them. We've got a lot of reports on E-course Road, just so you know, and we have requests, and DPW has knowledge that. Don't know when they're going to do that as well, but we'll stay on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam?
Ms. Webb?
I have a question. Is there Wick Road? How is that going? I haven't been.
Short answer is progressing. They had to skip over a portion of Cogswell. So, as you know, that went from Tyler to Cogswell up to Wick, and then continued to carry Wayne Road approaching right now, under the CS by Shook. So, there's a real critical deadline to report I get from. Opening up the ground. Osoga going east tomorrow. Detail, but that was, on that, there are phone calls that are done. But it's a Great Lakes Water Authority project. I want to compliment Roberto. He has stayed. One of the things that's putting this big forty-eight inch water line in. So, he's adamant to make sure that we don't have any disruptions to residential water or sewer lead connections. So, Roberto's been all over them, and they've been complying. I would like to say it's going faster. There's deep watering stations that are in place right now, so some of the neighbors may hear some noise. Those are generators, pumps, so that once they dig down, they won't run into water issues. And that is also going on, on the Cogswell portion.
Thank you so much. People are asking, but there has not been any negative conversation regards to it, because, and secondly, the company is going almost like above and beyond a speed of lightning with their construction work.
For one thing I hear is the one-way traffic, and people have to get accustomed to that. Just work with us on that. Any disruptions in the area, they will be coming back through. We've had some minor things, like mailboxes had to get put back up and some others, but we're holding them accountable to make sure that, once it's done, it'll be done right. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Webb? At this time, I just want to reiterate, last week I talked about the small business grant that Wayne County has been doing for the last couple of weeks. They have extended that for our small businesses. I'm excited about that. I want to do a shout-out for Mr. Wildsworth, who's reached out to some of our small businesses in the city, Councilwoman Williams, reaching out to some of our small businesses out here. I've reached out to some of our small businesses. Mary Drewer reached out, and Jasmine's, they've been talking to our small businesses. The Chamber's got communications out there. So, I want to thank everybody. We have to look out for our small businesses. So, keep spreading the word. It's still out there, and I'm going to have, if Jasmine don't mind coming forth to kind of give us more detail, because we have some updates even to that grant. So, thank you, Jasmine.
Good evening. Thank you. So, yeah, the Wayne County Back to Work Program, the round one just closed this past Friday, and I did receive word that over twenty Romulus businesses did apply. So, that's great news that, you know, word got out for that group. And any that applied during round one will find out a result if they've been approved or denied for the grant by July thirty-first. So, if businesses are out there tuning in, you can look forward to that hopeful reply. This morning, they did reopen for round two, and those are going to be now given out on a rolling basis. There's no deadline. It's just apply as soon as you can, and when the money runs out, it's out. But the exciting thing, starting today, is that they've changed some of the requirements. So, they've removed the cap on income, so there's no longer an income cap. Previously, it was one million dollars or less. And so, they've removed that. They've also expanded it to nonprofits. So, if any local nonprofits can show a loss of revenue during the time of the COVID pandemic, they are also eligible to apply. And the awards for the grants have also been increased from ten thousand dollars to now twenty, up to twenty thousand dollars. So, a couple of unique changes. They received, Wayne County received some more funding from the MEDC, so they were able to continue this grant program and expand it. So, again, you still must show a loss during the time of the COVID pandemic, but definitely, please feel free to call our office. You know, I have been tuning in on all of the Wayne County trainings and calls regarding this process, and I'm so happy and willing to help anyone that is, you know, interested in applying, or not sure if they're eligible or not. Happy to be a liaison for anyone out there interested. So, it's a great opportunity. But again, now that this second round is open, there's no deadline. It's just apply as soon as you can. If you missed it the first round, definitely want to get it in as soon as possible.
Thank you, Jas. I must say, I've been on the Wayne County calls weekly, and Jasmine has become a guru with this business, small business grant. So, thank you, Jasmine, and just your flexibility and willingness to help. On that note, my last thing before I close out is the census. I can do it now. Thank you for the honor and privilege of your chair in the meeting today. So, I'm going to pull the census up here now. Our numbers are still flat, very flat. We've not had a lot of movement in the last six weeks. We still have time, but we really need to spread the word. We will not have this opportunity again for ten years if we don't do something with the census now. So, please, 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 let's spread the word. Let's get people signing. Tell your friends. Tell people in other cities, states, I mean, cities, and just tell everybody in other cities, because we won't have this opportunity again for ten years. It doesn't take a lot of time, nine questions, ten minutes. We give monies for our community. So, let's spread the word. We still got some time, but we don't want to wait till the last minute to be on top of the census. The numbers have been really flat for the last six weeks. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am.
I'm really sorry. I just wanted to mention the website for that grant. I forgot to give the URL. It's wayncity.com slash backtowork. So, it's super easy to remember. You can also, Wayne County has a great Facebook page. We've been sharing it on the city's page as well. So, again, it's wayncity.com slash backtowork. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Thank Jasmine. Yes, and let's get the census word out, too. We need that, too. So, thank you. And that concludes my report.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, to accept the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Next on the agenda is the mayor's report.
Good evening, city council, clerk, listening audience. Welcome back. You know, it's to our residents at home. I know we heard a lot of feedback from people. It was, these are difficult times. We were able to conduct government with electronics, and I know sometimes it was clunky. And so, I'm not going to hit star nine, Chairman, to be recognized. But it was frustrating. But here we are. I want to thank council, our clerk, our whole team, Steve Dudak, a lot of people. Kevin Kraus came together to make this happen. So, again, I would say, give us your feedback. You know, still, if the audience at home can't hear, give us feedback as well, too. I kind of feel like I'm in the penalty box here a little bit, so I'm trying to speak into the microphone and be clear. But it's good to be back. Good to see the faces, because as you know, during those meetings, now I can see who the team is here to bring people up. And it was really tough when we were just on the phone doing that. So, I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to be back. And so, the quote that I brought, Madam Chairman, that pertains to crisis time back in the eighteen sixties. This one is by, was then-President Abraham Lincoln, and it goes as, "I am a firm believer in the people. If given the truth, they can be depended upon to meet any national crisis. The great point is to bring them the real facts." And so, I think a motion runs high, and the best thing we can do during any crisis is try to be factual and truth-based. And I think that was good advice then, and it's good words to live by now. I also want to extend prayers to the Barton family. Talked to John today. So, John, be safe and praying for you and your family. I do just have two action items before council tonight. If I could present those, please. First one is a recommendation from Kevin Kraus, our fire chief. This was a recommendation to concur with the administration and allow the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached memorandum of understanding, which is an agreement with Dearborn Heights Fire Department, who is submitting a grant application for the nineteen twenty assistance firefighter grant, or AFG, as it's called acronym. You should note that the grant be awarded, Maria Ferris, our new finance director, has verified that ten percent, or eight thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents, would be the match that comes from the operating supply account that's listed. Chairman, I will, for the understanding and the assistance of the grant.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Wildsworth, supported by Ms. Webb, to concur with the administration and allow the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached memorandum of understanding, which is in agreement with the Dearborn Heights Fire Department, who is submitting a grant application for the twenty nineteen twenty twenty assistance firefighter grant. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If I could. Just a word. Chief Kraus, do you want to come up, please? Where can these funds be used for, publicly here?
Evening, council, mayor, madam clerk. These funds will be dedicated for the equipment that's identified in the memorandum of understanding. So, for us, it would be four external defibrillators to finish equipping our city buildings, and then also two ALS heart monitors to supplement the ones we have now, as we're moving forward with our transporting program.
Fine, thank you.
Somebody else?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Vote yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, council. The next item, there's actually two different motions required. This recommendation also comes from Kevin Kraus, our fire chief, and Gary Harris, purchasing director. And so, it's packaged two ways. The first part is a truck. The second part is a maintenance agreement. So, the first is to concur with the administration and extend ITB eighteen slash nineteen dash zero three, and that's to R&amp;R Fire Truck Repair, Inc., and that's for the acquisition of a one motorized pumper fire apparatus for the city of Romulus Fire Department. Total amount, five hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Those funds have been verified and available out of the motor vehicle capital outline. So, the first is for the truck. So, the first is for the truck.
Did the chair, if I may? I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration for the acquisition of one motorized pumper fire apparatus.
Support.
Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe, uh, to concur with the administration and extend ITB eighteen slash nineteen dash oh three to R and R Fire Truck Repair Inc. For the acquisition of one motorized pumper fire apparatus for the City of Romulus Fire Department in the amount of five hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Any discussion?
Chair.
I spoke with you, kept, uh, Amanda Kraus. You had discussed that we may be financing this. Are we going to do the finance option or are you going to pay directly this amount?
Go ahead chief. So, yes, when, uh, when I spoke to pretty much everyone, I think, um, with the exception of Mr. Wadsworth this, uh, this afternoon, uh, at that time, we were unsure. We were looking at the different options. We did get the financing numbers back and they were, uh, very good. I believe, uh, it was one point nine three percent for the, uh, actual financing. And just with everything with the COVID and everything, we think that, uh, right now, the best option is to go ahead and finance that over the four-year period at that interest.
I agree, I agree, thank you.
Yeah, we, we concurred that also with, uh, finance and when we talked. We have regular revenue meetings and expenditures with Plant Moran and our team. And, and that's one of the things, especially during a crisis, is to, money is cheap. That one point nine, that, that's a great rate. Uh, it would be best to hang on to those funds, uh, you know, within our department. So, uh, you know, we're gonna look at the financing piece of it and come back to you on that.
Would we still be eligible, let's say, if a grant opportunity came up since we were financing this, uh, fire truck?
So, right now, you know, with all the, all the different, uh, revenue streams coming from the federal government and the state right now, because of COVID, we're unsure what they're gonna allow or what they're not gonna allow. But, um, definitely by financing it and only paying a portion of it right now, we definitely have the option of being able to at least, um, make that ask in the future, even if, you know, they tell us no.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Uh, and I did speak with you and I agree also with the financing, but, um, with our schedules, I never was able to, uh, get back with you. Did you get the dollar amount of what's in the motor vehicle fund?
So, uh, motor vehicle capital fund, when I talked to, uh, Director Skeptici, was just under one point six million.
Okay.
And five hundred and fifty of that was what was budgeted for this truck already.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Roscoe?
I, I didn't really have a question, uh, Kevin, but I just wanted to say, I think you did a really good job with this. And a very smart decision, financing right now with as cheap as money is to borrow. So, um, you know, it saves us, uh, in case we have another emergency, another vehicle, something else happens, you know, it, it allows us to be able to still service the residents like we should.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I also wanted to point out that by taking quick action on this, uh, this evening, because, um, the way these pumpers and these trucks are, uh, produced, the truck that we will be receiving started production nine months ago, uh, which means it was under pricing from nine months ago. If we didn't take action this evening and we had to wait, go through this whole process and not extend that bid, um, right off the top, because of the changes in tariffs and everything that have occurred, we would add thirty-four thousand dollars to the price of this truck.
Sure would.
So, by taking this, we're saving the city that much money as well.
Thank you.
It's a great move, thank you chief.
Ms. Webb, did you have something?
Um, my colleague. Say, and then chief, but I was going to say so. Thank you chief.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you council. And the second part of that second motion is, uh, the maintenance agreement, which has been very helpful with our prior truck. Uh, so I'm asking that you concur with the administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into a ten-year maintenance agreement. Uh, that's with R and R Trucking also, for a fixed annual amount of one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars.
Madam Chair.
Who said that?
I did. I'll make that motion to occur with administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into a ten-year maintenance agreement with R and R Trucking for a fixed annual amount of one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, with administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into a ten-year maintenance agreement with R and R Trucking for a fixed annual amount of one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Any discussion? Now, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you council, that concludes my report.
Number six is the clerk's report. Six A is a request for a public hearing for an alley vacation for August tenth, twenty twenty, at seven o'clock PM.
Did the chair, if I may? That motion for an alley vacation, public hearing on August tenth, twenty twenty?
Support.
Motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Williams, for a public hearing for alley vaca- for alley vacation on August tenth, twenty twenty, at seven PM. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, I'd like to say something, please. Uh, with this alley vacation, I've talked with some, um, the neighbors and I've vacated the alley behind my house. Go, and that's really a good thing for the neighbors. It's really good. Cause that's still a part of their property. I think it's great.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes. Chair, most yes, motion approved.
Last item under the clerk's report. This is a study session request from our Director of Marketing, Marketing and Community Development, Jasmine Dancy, for July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, at six thirty PM. And this is to discuss the Detroit region, Eritreopolis, and discuss the City of Romulus's benefit and involvement in the organization.
Madam Chair. I'll make that motion for a study session request from Jasmine Dancy, Director of Marketing and Community Development, for July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, at six thirty PM.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, for the study session request from Jasmine Dance, Director of Marketing and Community Development, for July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, at six thirty PM. Any discussion?
Hearing.
Now, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you council. Before I close out, I just wanna remind the residents with regards to absentee voting, ballot voting, and, uh, we have a drop box right out front that's conveniently located. You can just drive up and drop your, uh, ballots and applications. I wanna remind everyone that the closer we get to the election, that it's probably best to utilize the drop box. Um, takes five to seven days with the mail and you wanna make sure that your ballot is counted. So, we strongly, uh, suggest that if you possibly can, to utilize the drop box. Um, also, the reminder, this is a primary election and you, uh, have to vote straight party, uh, in this election. Uh, there are, uh, there is a nonpartisan race, uh, two nonpartisan races, uh, that's on the ballot. But, to remind everybody, you have to vote in one party. Um, if you make a mistake or if you have to spoil your ballot, you can do so, but please give us a call. It must be in writing, um, if you, if you need to spoil, you spoil your ballot. Um, we have the forms in the clerk's office, but you can send us an email saying, "I need to spoil my ballot because I made a mistake." Okay? And please give us a call at seven three four nine four two seven five four zero or you can always email us at elections@romulusgov.com. Thank you, that concludes the clerk's report. Um, thank you. There is no treasurer's report. Number eight is public comment and this is the portion of the meeting that set aside for those that are in the public. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and after you have been acknowledged by the chairperson, approach the podium and you have three minutes to speak. Any additional time will be upon the consent of the chairperson. Also, those that have joined this meeting electronically and if you wish to speak during this portion of the meeting, you may do so, uh, using the raise hand, uh, method. Um, if you've dialed in, uh, press star nine or if you are, if you've joined this meeting, uh, using the Zoom meeting web, uh, use the raise hand icon. And we do have one request, written request to speak, Madam Chair, um, Mr. Justice.
Good evening, Dale Justice, thirteen five, Inxter Road. I have a couple of issues. It might take more than a three minutes. But, um, they've been digging, building around my property. Now, the water's coming in, filling up the ditch. Um, and they tell me, well, it's nature, but he's got a pump pumping the water out there. My ditch is filling up. I have to worry about my basement filling up now. And, uh, he tells me what's an act of nature. And, uh, it's just not right. You know, we, the people here, voted you people in for the best interests of us, right?
Yes.
Okay? Well, the dust has been all over the place. I talked to the guy a month and a half ago and he said he'd bring a tanker in there, okay? Hasn't run the tanker in. Today, we were there talking to him, the building inspector came out there and he even said, "Oh yeah, well, we gotta get the fire hiders and all that." I said, "Well, I've been on to you a month and a half." Dust all over, dust in the house, everything. Um, and the other thing is, is that, um, the property line, okay? They were supposed to build, I don't wanna fight with, with the DPW and all them because you people are who we voted in to take care of us, okay? They're saying, "Well, somebody else did it, council, don't do this." I don't care, we voted for you people in. Well, the thing of it is, is that when we came here, a bunch of meetings, they told us fifty feet from our property line and nothing would be disturbed. Now, they got twelve feet, nine feet and ten feet from my property line, a ditch going down. Okay? And they wasn't supposed to do it. Now, they're telling the city, the, the DPW and stuff, tell me, "Well, yeah, they can do that." Well, we vote you people in to oversee this stuff. We've come here and they told me, "Well, it wasn't in the minutes, it wasn't in that." We got up, we spoke, the guys spoke, everybody said fifty feet. Well, they're not doing it. And my thing of it is, is that, you know, I've got this all around my house. And, and there's dust, there's everything there. And I pay taxes, I've been in the city since the middle seventies and I'm very aggravated with the city right now. And what's going on here? This guy is flooding ditches, the ditch is even flooding across the street on Inxter Road. Something has to be done. This guy come in there, wanted to buy my property for fifty thousand. Where am I gonna go and get a house for fifty thousand? Okay? We vote you people in here. If it wasn't for the residents, nobody would be here. The businesses, half of them don't live in the city, probably more than that. They don't care about us, so we vote you people in to take care of us. And they, the ci- the DPW tells me the fifty feet wasn't wrote down, wasn't anything. Time and time again, we've come to this meeting and the fifty feet was there. I talked to Abdul, I talked Vanessa, I talked to Bob McCrate today, okay? They told me the same thing, fifty feet. I get here and then now they're telling me, "No, no, that's not it." And, and, and all these people already admitted it. Now, they're trying to say, "No, it didn't happen." And, and it sounds like a cover-up, okay? You can need to worry about the residents instead of the business, because right now, if it wasn't for the residents in the city, you guys wouldn't be here. You wouldn't be elected, you know? So, I'm just saying, something has to be done. I, 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 we fought, everybody's fought with these, with them over here. And the guy, "Well, it's just an act of nature." No, it's not an act of nature when you got a pump running the water out to the ditches. And then he opened up this other ditch today after Bob and everybody's there. He took and made another ditch and pushed all the water back to the other side again. So, tomorrow, he'll start the thing up again and pump the water all the way out our ditches. And it's filling up and it's coming in our basements. Something has to be done.
Ms. Wadsworth?
If I can, in the defense of Mr. Justice, I mean, I was at the, that meeting and it was fifty feet. I mean, we didn't want it fifty feet. I think they wanted more than fifty feet.
Right, but we, we, we turned, that, that was from the, when he does the pond, it was supposed to be fifty feet from the, uh, uh, property line.
It's, uh, Dale, you're in a bad situation.
Yeah, but we all was here and it was supposed to be fifty feet from the property line and it's nine feet, twelve feet and ten feet.
It was supposed to be fifty feet, there's no ifs and buts about that.
They tell me it don't. Somebody is messing up, something's going on. Take care of our citizens, not the businesses.
Yeah, you know, um, there, uh, Justice sent me those, uh, those pictures and I printed them out for the rest of the council to see. I went out there. We, we can't allow this to happen. Uh, uh, I asked Carol, uh, could we get the minute? And, um, businesses can't be allowed. They, we can't approve of businesses to come in the city and then once they get here, for them to be so disrespectful and disregard residents that been here almost a lifetime. So, um, I asked that Bob, the DPW and all those guys go out there and whatever they're doing to disrespect these residents, stop them, stop them in their tracks. We have that authority. They can't just say, "We're putting up our, this building and we don't care about the folks that's there." We, we have this argument and that's just why I said earlier today about the company that's coming on Ecos Road. You, we have to consider the residents. That traffic, if they decide to come anyway, that traffic is gonna be horrendous. Who is gonna have to deal with it? The residents that live on Ecos Road and those that work on Ecos Road or travel Ecos Road.
Well, that's like Inxter Road. We're gonna have extra traffic there. You know, my problem is Inxter Road right now, you know, but I'm just saying, you guys have to do something for us. We voted you in here. These people, you, some of you guys has come out to it and you seen, this pond is going all the way around my house. And Wadsworth even said, "The pond is supposed to be fifty feet from the property line." DPW tells, "Oh no, it didn't happen that way." Every one of you guys were here and, and that's how it came out. Now, I don't know at the end what the writing got down or whatever. All I know, when I was at every meeting here, it was fifty feet. And that's what I want him to have to stick with. Is that fair or not?
Ms. Abdo?
Yes, I went there today and what's going on definitely is wrong. The man is taking, pumping water and mud out from the back of the property. It isn't just like it rained yesterday. There's, we said that originally when we went to the complaining commission, that this is very, very wet land. He's pumping mud and it's just growing inches. The, the ditches are full and they're the, I know it's the fault of the county. They don't clean the ditches and the drains and it's just slowly, but it's probably into his house by now.
It is.
And, and it just keeps coming and he, and the builder has a big hose and he keeps pumping it out there. He could care less that his house is getting flooded.
I, I didn't have that problem before he started this. And my thing is, he should not be able to pump that water out until the ditches were done right.
Right, it's, it's like we're putting the cart before the horse. He doesn't care, his basement's flooded, the house next to him's basement's been flooded.
The guy's laughing at me. He tells me, "Call the city, call the police, whatever." They done damaged the side of my house and everything else when they were cutting the trees down and stuff and they laughing about it. I shouldn't have to put up with that as a taxpayer for years and my neighbors the same way.
Bob, can you speak to that fifty feet? Because that's the, we went through this a long time because I know on the one side, the north, the north, the one side, they were gonna be fifty feet, the other side, they were gonna be seventeen. But they said around the house, it was going to be fifty feet. They weren't going to be building and I was there. They weren't going to be building, and I was there. It's a ten, it's less than ten feet, and he's got a moat, already, they're already building a moat around his house.
But they're telling me that the zoning board or something else approved it. Well, you know what? I, I don't know. We vote you people in, okay? Whoever's on these other boards, that's who you guys are supposed to watch over, which I, that's what I think, right or wrong.
Well, we tried to get a council representative on the zoning board, but most people voted that down.
We need, we need you people backing us. You know, we want people that's gonna work for us, not work against us, and that's what's going on with us.
But I didn't know that it was changed.
Fifty feet, we've done had three or four council people here agree down to fifty feet, the, the ditch was supposed to be fifty feet. Now, if it gets changed from City Hall to DPW, whose fault is that? We done what we could do to come here and stop it. And you guys sit here and all admitted, yes, it's fifty feet. Now it's gonna be changed because somebody else changed it? We should've known, you guys should've known. Something should happen.
Mr. Justice?
Um, Ms. Webb?
Uh, yes, um, I'm, I'm sorry for hearing all that. First of all, it is hard to stop companies, okay? But, you should have no dust here. Because if that contract, any contractor who's doing any work, any type of construction work, is supposed to have a water truck, and they water it down two, three times a day, whatever is necessary. Also, um...
But do we have this in writing?
Uh, remember, well, that's what I was gonna get to. Remember, I'm the one. I love my wetlands, and I spoke on that. They were, would not go that far back. There is no way that there can be that much water unless they have tapped into those wetlands. And, and if they have, then they are in trouble as far as I'm concerned. Also, um, we need to get that contract or that agreement out, maybe from planning or someone. Get that out, because it would stipulate what they can and can't do. I mean, it's impossible, uh, for it not to, and I'm pretty sure planning has an agreement.
Well, my thing of it is, is that everybody up here knew it was fifty feet. Well, the DPW is telling me, no, it don't have to be fifty feet. It was agreed here. Where it got changed, it should've came back through your body to be changed.
Yes, and I just would like to say, anything that, uh, uh, anything that we approve, or that's approved through this city, if a contractor come in and they're violating what was approved, they can be stopped. It should be a stop work order. You do it on anything else.
They're telling me, they're telling me they're not.
They gonna have to do a better job than that.
That's why I'm here.
Cause I went out there, and no one, especially a resident, should not have to deal with what the residents on Inxter Road, like yourself and the others, are facing. Because the contractor don't have the respect for the residents, and that's just what's going on. Cause he looked at me and rolled his eyes at me like...
He laughs all the time. He thinks he's God in the city because he's building buildings in the city, but we, the residents, put you guys in here to, to take care of business for us, and it ain't getting done. When a contractor can come and do what he wants.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Wadsworth.
I've learned over the many years here, that contractors, once they get what they want, very seldom do they really respect the residents. But if you run the tape from the zoning board of appeals, you're gonna see, the fifty feet was in there. That was what they voted on.
She's saying no.
I don't know.
Well, let's hear from them.
Yeah.
Mister?
Mr. Wadsworth has done, you know, we'd be wa- willing to do this. We, we could have Steve sit down with planning and review every process, every step that was approved, and verify it. When something goes to a board, it's our job to follow that. So, we hold people accountable, we don't have a problem doing that. He can, he can document, if there's something that's not being done, uh, we'll put stop orders, we have no problem doing that. Is that fair enough? And we'll have him report back to you, and, but there are some different boards that went through. It went through planning, I think it went through ZBA, I think there were some others involved, so why don't you have him look at the action, look at those minutes, and if there's something that's not being followed, and you have proof of it, we'd love to address it.
Mr. Justice?
Fair enough?
Enough, we're gonna follow that.
Okay, but my thing of it is, is that I don't care what they approved over there, okay? But what we approved when we was here was the fifty feet, so it should've been changed, and it should've had to come back to you guys.
Right. Let us do the due diligence, and we'll get back with you, okay?
Alright, thanks a lot.
No, thank you.
Just, just one last comment, Madam Chair. And while we're looking at that, we need to look at what the discussion was here. Because, did we vote on it? What happened with that? Was it all just discussion, or what? So where our legal foothold is? I mean, I know what we discussed, um, but exactly what can we legally hold them to?
Ms. Williams?
And also, I would just like to know, uh, as long as that, because what it, what the residents over there is dealing with as we speak, it shouldn't take days. We need to get on this, and I would ask the mayor to get on this as soon as possible, that as, as they get out and see that these, this contractor is not keeping his word as he said he was, that they put a stop work order on it. I mean, and, instead of waiting for days and weeks, and the damage just gets worse. Because, as I said, I've been out there, and if I was a, uh, that lived on that street, I would be upset also. Thank you.
I guess to the chair, Steve, can you start tomorrow working with planning on that and look at it and building and, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Ms. Abdul?
Uh, one of the immediate issues is the pumping of the mud and the water into the ditch, ditches. I mean, they're pumping it from way back where the property is, trying to drain their property. And what is happening is they're drowning out the residents there. Both houses on equal, on both sides, their basements are totally flooded, and yet we were, the planning commission told us there wasn't gonna be any of this problem, and we knew that that area was wetlands. And then houses down the road are now flooding. And this is all because this man has this huge long pipe draining his property so he can build. He doesn't care that he's flooding out the residents. There has to be a re, there has to be something that we can do for the residents, cause it's really bad over there. Well, I don't know about that. I, I don't know about that. You know, hopefully they're telling us to drain, but you know.
Ms., Ms. Webb?
Uh, yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about what has happened to the residents. But, you know what? It wouldn't happen, so this, it makes me more concerned about developers, contractors, whoever comes into this city wants to do just whatever they want to do. And it's not right, it's not fair. And those wetlands, I'm very passionate about wetlands. And apparently, that's what they're doing. And like I said, you should have no dust. I mean, come on, I mean, you know, that's common sense that you have a water truck out there. I mean, that's, you know, it's, 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 um, honestly, it's ridiculous. It's really ridiculous. Because, and I request that Bob goes out there, the administration, I request that Bob goes out there tomorrow and talks with that gentleman, and checks out to see, how far is that coming? I mean, how far back does it go? Because we did have conversation in regards to those wetlands. That we did.
Ms. Abdul?
If it is required that they have a, a truck to pump, you know, spray down the dirt, dirt from all the, the dust is tremendous out there, and he's not doing it, and he says he hasn't gotten it in, then the work should stop, if that's a requirement. I do not know if it's a requirement. If it's a requirement, then that should be enough to put a halt to the work until he follows the rules.
Trust me, my husband worked Thompson McCully Company forty-five years, and I'm sure that the attorney probably knows this. I don't care what you do, it has, it's a law to have a water truck on any construction site. I don't care where it is.
And he's been going? Yeah, can we, let's, let's give the, the city a chance to do this.
I just wanna make one more comment. I, I don't care what they're doing or how they're doing it, but if they're putting water in people's homes in their basement, they gotta be stopped. As simple as that. They have to be stopped until they stop doing that. I, I'm done.
Wadsworth?
Um, if there's no more discussion, we'll just leave that in your hand.
Mayor? Um, anything else? Under public comment, Ms., Madam Clerk? Okay, can we close that out?
Number nine is unfinished business.
Yes, and, and if, if we could get those pictures passed back around so we can, uh, get them to the mayor, so he can, uh, have them for his record.
Is there any more unfinished business?
No. So, and speaking on that situation, because of, uh, what happened last week, and it was voted down, the, the resolution to have a, a council member that sit on the different commissions or committees, um, I, I don't understand, and I definitely didn't agree, that we as a legislative body wouldn't do our due diligence to be a check and balance to some of these commissions. So, if, I feel that if the council choose, the majority of council said no. So if they choose not to, uh, exercise their, uh, right, or their powers to appoint different council members on a board, then we should at least give the residents by make, uh, doing a resolution to give the residents that opportunity to speak. We, we, we just cannot close the door and say, that's it, it's not gonna happen. The simplest thing is, uh, Mr. Justice, and other situations that have happened, with residents and businesses have complained, we must do our due diligence and be, have a check and balance. So if this council even choose to not take that length to do a resolution, to, uh, put it on the ballot and let the residents vote, then I would ask the clerk, our clerk, to make sure that we, from moving forward, get minute to every committee and commission in this city. So we as a council would know what's going on, because a lot of times, we don't find out until either we get a complaint or someone, or the mayor office informs. But during these meetings, we're not, we're not informed about what's happening in these, uh, these meetings with the committees or the commissions. And on top of that, I would ask the clerk, if the council choose not to do a resolution, to put it on a ballot for the residents to vote, to change the charter that a com- council member would sit on commissions or committees, then I would ask the, a clerk to give me the number of voters that we would need to get it on the ballot for November. Because we cannot just close the door and say, that's it from last, from our last council meeting. We're, we're not gonna do anything, the majority of the council don't want to elect or, uh, select a council member to sit on the different commission and committees. We, we was not put here to do that, just close the door. So if we don't wanna do our job as the majority, then let the voters say, speak. And, and that's just how I feel about it. Cause you, we, we can't close the door. This, this is why we have issues with contractors that come into our city, and they think Ramus is a joke, cause they come in and get away with a lot of different things. But because people don't complain to the mayor office, or don't complain to the council, you know, we don't know until after the damage is done. You know, I had, uh, when I built my home back in, uh, early, uh, two thousand and six, I stayed at the city, over at the building department, about issues, and they, some of those guys over at the building department, Bob wasn't in, in the position he's in now, but they turn their head. So I know what they'll do. They, they laugh at us. So, you know, if the clerk can give me those numbers, if the council choose not to pass a resolution to amend the, uh, ordinance to place council members on different commissions and committees, then we'll just take it to a vote.
Do you guys have any discussion on unfinished business?
I, I do. I have a response to that one, uh, not to whatever council wants to do with the clerk or authorize, what, you know, bringing something to the, the residents. What I take offense to is comments saying that we're a joke and we're not holding people accountable. Councilwoman Webb brought up the contractor on Wick Road. You don't realize that Roberto shut them down with a stop order. That's a Great Lakes Water Authority project, so they responded because we were on top of them. We've shut down independent contractors, we shut down the Water Authority when they weren't looking out for the best interest of the residents, so Ramus is no joke. Ramus' building department's no joke. We hold people accountable. Uh, so I guess what I would say back to this point is, let's see what the facts of it are. Let's see what those boards voted and approved. Discussion's discussion. Let's, let's find out what really happened and what needs to be held accountable. If there's somebody that needs to be held accountable or needs a stop order, we have no problem doing it. So, uh, you know, we have a department filled with people that are holding people accountable on a daily basis. Thank you.
Ms. Abdul?
I just wanna say, I do think that we should have a council member on every commission and board. This isn't something that I want personally, I'm just saying, it makes sense. I did a poll, I called around numerous cities around here, I have friends on five different city councils, and all of them have someone on the ZBA. That's an important one, but I mean, there are other, there are other committees that we should have council representation. Because we need to get communication between us. That was just one issue. And I, I would like, ask my council colleagues to consider it. You know, and I, we're not just talking about the ZBA, we're talking about any coun- any committee that is formed. We should be represented. We are the governing body.
Ms. Wadsworth, then Ms. Webb?
Madam Chair, I, I just want to address the fact that in regards to being informed of minutes for different committees. Um, over the years that I have been here, I won't say that a hundred percent of the time I've seen reports and minutes, but almost every single meeting that is out there, when we were here in the chamber, they would be over here in our mailbox, the minutes for, um, pre- previous, uh, different um, committees that met. Some don't meet every month, some meet quarterly, however they meet. The library, different things, I've seen different things in my, uh, email in regards to, you know, what they have going on as far as their minutes and, um, what they're doing. So, um, in that regard, I, I do believe that, um, the majority of the time, we are informed with the copies of their minutes, um, one way or the other. Of course, we haven't been in the chamber, so we haven't been getting paper copies of things. Um, but there's been a lot of committees that have not met either, because of the COVID, uh, cur- recently. But other than that, you know, in almost the twelve years that I've been here, um, I see a lot of minutes. And, uh, you know, sometimes you read through them, sometimes you scan through them, you know, depending on, uh, what's going on within their, uh, different information. But in their, in their defense, um, most of the time, you do see minutes, one way or the other.
Williams?
You've been here for twelve years, I've been here for almost three. And I don't get minutes in the, in my mailbox. I, I don't say that I don't get something that I get, and whatever I get, I read. And, and as to your comment, uh, Councilwoman, it's the last. And to the mayor, I wasn't speaking on this building department. As I said, I was speaking on what I went through when I built my home. And, and, and Bob can attest to, they know how many times I was up there at the building department, or he was at my home over there on Abbey Drive, and how much I was at this city. Mayor, you was on council at that time, so maybe you didn't hear about it, but I'm telling you, the, that builder ended up, I ended up taking him to court and sued him, and the state of Michigan put him out of business. So I wasn't saying that the folks now take us as a joke, but what I went through personally, they did. And that's why I went to the lengths I did to take him, you know, all the way to the state level on a lot of the things that they were doing far as building my home. I, I'm not saying anything bad about absolutely anyone. All I'm saying is that we're here to make sure that we do our due diligence to take care of the people. As I asked the clerk earlier, that we begin to get the minutes, because I haven't seen any. So if you getting them and I'm not, I got a problem with that. But I have not got minutes unless they were included in my council packet, but not separately in my mailbox. So just moving forward, you know, I would like to see that. And I had a lot of calls pertaining to the way we voted, and we didn't want a council person on there, and that's why I'm bringing this back up. It has nothing to do with Mr., Mr. Justice's situation. This is moving forward to make sure that we as a legislative body be the check and balance that the people put us here to do. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, Ms., Ms. Webb?
Say this. First of all, yes, I, I do agree that we should have that motion, a council representative on one of, you know, on the commission. But we do, we do get minutes once a month. At least we did until this, we haven't been back in here from planning. And they are in our mailbox, I have them stacked because I was going through some in twenty, uh, nineteen, uh, just the other day when I was cleaning out some paperwork. We, Carol sends those to us, and it is in our box. But like my colleague said, we may skim over them or whatever. But they're laying right in there, cause I get it from the BCA, I get it from planning, I even get it from the economic development, um, uh, department. Um, only if maybe we request, we may get something from the accessory office or whatever. But yes, we do get them from planning. I said, I'm telling you, and I'm speaking on what I get, I can't speak on what you, Councilwoman Webb.
I was just saying, I know I receive.
I'm saying, don't, don't, a- after I say that I don't receive something, I don't need to be double-checked. I'm ta- I'm saying I asked the clerk not to come. I'm ta, I'm saying I asked the clerk, not the council member.
Williams, I am not double. Excuse me.
Asked the, I asked the clerk, moving forward, that's all I've asked, to make sure that we get them. I, I can't say what any other council member received. All I'm saying is what I haven't received, yes, I have got submitted from time to time inside of my council packet, but never separately. That's what I'm saying. So I'm not trying to disregard you or, uh, Councilwoman Celeste on what you guys get. That's why I asked the clerk, moving forward, to make sure that everybody gets the minutes. Whether it's a council meeting or not, even if they email to us. Thank you.
Do we, are, are we ready to close that? Uh, Miss, I'm sorry, Ms. Webb?
Uh, if I can just say one thing. I speak, I don't come back on you, Councilwoman Williams, in any type of defense or in any type of way. I was just explaining that I receive those. But don't treat me as though when I say something, you come back as though I can't talk. I am a grown woman and I've received the minutes and you will not, I will not sat here and it doesn't bother me. People like me or not, whether you vote for me or not, I'm gonna stand on my own two feet and nobody's gonna tell me that I, I can't talk or I can't say this or I shouldn't say this because I'm coming back. I'm telling you the truth. And I'm sure if my other colleagues would admit to it, they know that they get the minutes from the planning. They know they get it from BCA. I mean, I get it and I'm gonna say that I get it. I'm not going against you, maybe you don't get it, but I get them. I was just, and I'm going to defend the compartments when I'm treated. Right, and that's. They give me the minutes.
Any more discussion? Alright. Moving on.
Number ten is new business. Number eleven for approval is warrant twenty dash thirteen.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we pay warrant twenty dash thirteen in the following amounts. General fund, five hundred sixty thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars and nineteen cents. Major street fund, sixty-one thousand, three hundred seventy dollars and seventy cents. Local street fund, five hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. Public safety fund, two hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and fifty-four cents. Cable TV, four thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Mayorman Road Special Assessment, three thousand, one hundred one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Street lighting fund, fifty-two thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Oakwood SAD, ninety-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, ninety-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty-five cents. Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Nine-one-one Service Fund, twelve thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. NARC forfeiture for the state, six hundred ten dollars and twenty-two cents. Library Fund, forty-two thousand, one hundred dollars and sixty-two cents. DDA, fourteen thousand, five hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Tifa District Two, twenty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Court Building Construction Fund, four hundred ten thousand, eight hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty cents. Binding Road Extension, E-course Construction, six thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars, seventy-five cents. Tifa Binding Road Construction, one hundred thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Water and Sewer Fund, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Motor Vehicle, one hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars, forty-four cents. Technology Services, forty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and eighty cents. Retiree Insurance Benefits, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-eight dollars, ninety-six cents. Revolving Fund, ninety-one thousand, five hundred seventy-seven dollars and eleven cents. General Tax, fifty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-seven cents. One hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and nineteen cents. Total of all funds, three million, eight hundred eighty thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Can I get a second?
Support.
The motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe for the approval warrant number twenty dash thirteen. Seven hundred eighty thousand dollars, one hundred thirty-one and thirty-seven cents. Ms. Abdo, any discussion? Ms. Abdo? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Number twelve is communication. Okay, then it takes us to number thirteen adjournment.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Wildsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe for the adjournment meeting. Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
You're adjourned.